Welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight, and if you're able and will, would you stand and join us in our pledge to our flag, our country? And thrilled tonight to have Reverend Dr. Marlon Thane with us again, and you're so welcome anytime.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming tonight. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us, let us pray. Father God, again we come to you just thankful to get another opportunity to do your work. And we pray for all the families that are represented here, all the households that are represented here. Thank you Father God for the sacrifice, Father God, thank you for the spirit in which we gather this evening, Father God. Now we pray that everything is done in decent and in order. Pray Father God that you get the glory out of this meeting. Father God, again, thank you for the good work that is being done in this area, and we give you all the praise. It's in your goodness and Jesus' name we ask all these things, amen.
Thank you sir. So our congregation, who your congregation is, and where are you, sir?
Okay, I'm the pastor of Cedar Top Baptist Church, Willmore, right here on Scott Street. And we've been there, I've been there now six years, I'm getting old, I tell you what. I know this is a tight knit community, and we thank you for all that you do. If you ever need to come, you need a church home, you need to come in and pray, come on by, we'd love to have you, alright?
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you all, thank you sir.
The council, our first item is the minutes of July twenty-one. They've been circulated to you, are there any corrections to be noted?
Move for approval?
Thank you, thank you. Question, all in favor, please indicate by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is Christopher Montgomery is here from, he's the director of planning zone officially now. And we're glad you're here, and tonight we, well you can go ahead and make your question.
So it's just the, the second reading for the zone map amendment for Wesley Village from A1 to B1 for twenty-seven point six-six acres. If you all had any questions about it that didn't get answered last time, I'd be happy to answer them. But in order for it to be, become ordinance in the map to change, it just has to have the second reading and approval of the council.
So that motion's in order, yes?
We did have two abstain, right? I'll abstain for the same reason I did last time.
I will as well.
So that leaves for council, which is still above in Georgia.
So, a question before you, does approval of second reading of what was approved at Doleinsby?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, thank you. So discussion of the motion for approval of the second reading. Any none? Question, all in favor, please indicate by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, next item.
So we also, it's not on the agenda, but we have a second reading that has to go through approval for the text amendment to the city of Willmore zoning ordinance concerning the BOA Board of Adjustment Postponents. If you all, same thing, if you have any questions that weren't answered last time, I'm happy to answer them, but if not, then.
All council ready to read and all of that, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion? Question, all in favor, aye? Any can, aye?
Aye.
Don't lose it in that. Thank you, Christopher, and congratulations on your elevated position. Okay, Lori, we have the real intangible property tax, and we have more property tax on motor vehicles being introduced tonight, and I think you had that in an email, and you have a copy.
Yes, I sent everything out in an email on the Wednesday before I left on vacation. So, the compensating rate, if we went with that, is the point zero zero two oh seven, which is twenty point seven cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. The compensating rate last year was point zero zero two oh eight, so it would actually be a slight reduction in the rate. So that was for real property, and the compensating rate for tangible was also a little bit lower than it was last year. The budget is always based on going with the compensating rate, because that does not require a public hearing, and anything above that does require a public hearing.
This two takes two readings, so we introduce it tonight as a first reading of the council. As a recommendation.
Last year we used a compensating rate, is that correct?
Yes.
You're not making a specific recommendation though, but you're telling us that the budget was based upon the compensating rate.
Correct.
The budget we already approved.
Correct.
You just have to have the budget out before these, the information comes out that you can even calculate it, right?
I understand, my only hesitation is, meaning the budget was a challenge.
Yeah.
Correct?
Maybe, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna have to jump in here and just make a motion so we can get this discussion going.
Okay.
I move that we accept the compensating rate.
That's second. Discussion? Any discussion, or council?
I don't have hesitation, I'm trying, I can't see her eyes though, I could tell more if I could see her eyes. I don't have any hesitation, if you're telling me that you feel comfortable that we can use the budget that we have on, and obviously you feel that way, you wouldn't have as adopted. But it, there's a little less wiggle room than there has been in the past.
I mean, I feel like the budget's always tight, and the next step only adds, I mean, we're not talking lots of money to jump through the hurdles that you have to jump through to get to the next level. It's not really hurdles, it's just advertising for a public hearing and then doing all that. It's just not, it's not a huge increase in revenue to do that.
Looks like it would be thirty thousand, about a thirty thousand dollar increase in.
Only twenty-six.
With the substitute rate sixty thousand dollars with the other. And how do we compare to other cities' funds as a percentage?
I honestly, I didn't compare us to other cities.
I don't, I think you, what would you say, sixty thousand? It's only a twenty-six thousand dollar difference between compensating and substitute. How much do you want to give it to?
I thought it was a sixty thousand difference if it's the four percent and thirty thousand dollar increase if we're using the substitute.
Well, the difference would be twenty-six. So, I mean, it's seven thousand increase with the compensating, thirty-three for, that's the total in counting. So the difference would be twenty-six thousand on the compensating and substitute. The difference twenty-three.
I guess I'm just looking at this font column, the difference from prior year.
So the difference is seventy-three thousand, seven thousand, twenty-six.
I see.
But it would be a fifty thousand dollar difference if you went to the four percent.
Gotcha.
Which would be a big increase.
Lori, am I correct that you collected six fifty-five this last year?
Yes.
So even with.
We, we usually collect more than budget because we don't take it into account all of the smaller tangible, like there's a lot of small companies that pay tangible, and so it's a accumulation of those too, that we just use mainly the big four, Delta Gas, KU, La Grasse Energy, and there's one more that I can't think of right now, but we use those four for the calculation to estimate the tangible instead of looking at time order and all the other smaller ones. So we usually come in above budget typically, because we're also collecting some prior year little, some prior year collections too.
Okay, any other discussion?
On the motor vehicle, we haven't changed that in years, but I do know compared to the city and the county, we, we have typically been a little bit higher. And in the nine years that I've been here, we've never adjusted the motor vehicle rate, but I do know that we're higher than the other two.
Will, my call for question of the vote for the compensating rate, all in favor, please indicate by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading's done?
Like, over the past months, we've had a very active committee. Cheryl, why don't you just introduce the committee?
Sure.
I was pretty hard from there, I'll just shut mine off and start yours off.
Aw, man, we'll have to start off. And so, Mary Ann Water asks us to start a sidewalk committee, which we had in two thousand eighteen, and Lynn Cooper was the chair of that. So, we have Police Chief Nelson Schaub, Public Works Director and Distribution Jeff Moberly, Brady Ryle, Mr. Metcalf, Rob Yoder, which I was hoping would be here tonight, because he's normally here, and myself on the committee. And so, we realized with all that Allison is doing with the sidewalk down by the adventure serp, that we need to look at our sidewalks. And they are in disrepair, so we actually, as a committee, went out and took pictures of all of them. And we decided that we have, correct me if I'm wrong Lori, we can use municipal road aid to repair them. And we found out tonight that, and I can defer this to Rob if he has any questions or anything on it, that we have ninety-three thousand after we take out the salt for the salt that we're gonna use as winter snow. So, I, there, before I have Jeff Moberly come up, there are some questions that we need to answer as a council. So this is a two to five year program that we're gonna start doing. First one is gonna be sidewalks. The second one, well, what we have to ask is, are we as a city going to pay for homeowners to fix their sidewalks? And if you look here, we have in our, this is all the sidewalks that we have, that we need to repair. Why, we spent the list, and then on the back of that is streets that don't even have sidewalks. And that's part of the plan in the next three or four years. Do we put sidewalks on the ones that don't have it? Like Pleasant View up to the ballpark, doing any sidewalks going up there? Doing any sidewalks going to St. Daniel Park, because they stop at the end of Ken Ball? Another phase is do we use the municipal road aid funds to repair the culverts? And you'll see in this, the general really put together, there are different ones here with the prices on those, so you come up with those. And then we would also like to repaint the streets eventually. So we need to look at that as well. First question is, do we, as a council, oh, one more thing. There was an ordinance in eighteen that we actually never passed, that states in there that homeowners are responsible for their sidewalks. Nobody knows that now because we never passed it. Are we going to go ahead and pay for them, or have the homeowners pay for them? So those are some things that we need to discuss. But first, I'm gonna have Jeff come up, and you'll see on this right here, he and Josh Llewellyn and Greg Gibson went out today and measured all the streets, and how much money it's just going to be, so.
So I've got the same numbers that you guys have there in front of you, if you look at that, but we wasn't sure about the state roads to start with. So we broke down Lexington Avenue. We broke down Lexington Avenue, and there's, what did I say? Three hundred and seven blocks, and when I say a block, I'm looking at a four by four block of sidewalk, which is sixteen square feet. So at ten dollars a square foot, it's one hundred and sixty dollars per block, which includes demo, disposal, forming it, pouring it, finishing it, furnishing the concrete, the gravel, and even the dirt to go back inside of it once the forms are removed. So, three hundred and seven blocks on Lexington Avenue is forty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Two hundred and fifty-two blocks on Main Street, all of Main Street, east and west, that's not under construction either downtown, or at the campground property, that's excluded from it. It's forty thousand three hundred and twenty. So if you take the state stuff, off the state roads off, and all of what I call the city streets, added up to one thousand three hundred and seventy-four blocks of bad sidewalk, which is two hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. So if you go down to the very bottom, it says we have ninety-three thousand to spend. At a hundred and sixty dollars a block, you can do five hundred and eighty-one blocks out of that money. So the big grand total, if you want to weigh the whole thing, thing is three hundred and nine thousand dollars, which is pretty massive. If I'm right, or Wes, the chair, and stop me, I think the committee kinda come to the conclusion that this year, they would like, now that we know what the road aid money is, to do all the sidewalks on Lexington Avenue and Main Street, and bump the storm drains and bump the streets to another year since, you know, storm drains are pretty rough, but the streets, nothing's falling apart on the streets. We have streets that could need some attention, but they're not deteriorated. So I think the committee was leaning towards spending all the money on Lexington Avenue and Main, if it was possible, and I guess Mr. Gullit said it is possible. Any questions?
So, by not doing the streets, are the streets on like a certain year process that you rotate? I've known that they're.
I don't know prior to.
Hands are taking highs.
You know, when Dave was doing it, I know that, like, one year we did a three hundred thousand on the program, which is a lot of streets. So this year I had them, I picked out about ten streets that were iffy. Alan company got me numbers back, so we could look at each individual street and pick out an eight thousand dollar street, a ten thousand dollar street. You know, but none of them are to the point of they're impassable, there's some that start to need attention. So I would think that if we use all the money on the state roads this year, then next year we definitely need to get back on a little for sidewalks, a little for streets, a little for storm drains. But I think this year, this would kick off major, you know, especially in our main roads.
When you say a little for sidewalks and a little for streets, my sense of past has been a very, very little for sidewalks and majority.
Well, yeah, definitely the best has been zero for sidewalks pretty much, yeah. Yeah, so, so. So, you know, we put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, maybe we're spending fifty on storm drains, fifty on sidewalks, and fifty on streets. In the future, in a future, right, 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 this year I think the committee wanted to take the total and just spend it on sidewalks.
With an understanding that the new total comes this spring, we're not talking a year from now. I understood we were getting a hundred and forty-six thousand in the spring, do I not?
Is that running?
Again, I can't see your eyes.
It's just in the fiscal year, so.
Twenty-six.
They send usually in three different installments.
Oh, but you anticipate us getting another hundred and forty plus thousand?
Yeah, they sent us a letter, and they tell us how much we're getting, and that was what we thought it did.
We attempted that a few weeks ago, a hundred.
That, that's why I understood.
Well, basically, all we, or Lori, you know, we took into account of this was to take off a normal winter, what was going on salt last year, and a snow plow and a box that you guys approved for me to get for this year. So that came off of what we have now, brought that number down to ninety-three. So. We had about a hundred and twenty before we did this. So when the new money comes, and you know, that we're ready to kick back in on streets or storm drains or.
We had talked about twenty-ish thousand from this project, but we keep that in that project?
It would be my opinion, if this money can be used on state roads, now that money doesn't have to be downtown sidewalk project, right? Because you all get.
Still gotta finish it.
We're not there yet. We don't wanna spend that yet.
I, I would love it if Mr. Gullit would say out loud that it's okay to do what up until an hour ago I've been told wasn't allowed.
So I, I was in part of the conversations that where Mr. Chaney indicated that you were not able to do this, but I was provided by the KLC, by their attorneys there, an attorney general opinion, which is eighty-four dash two seventy-one, is the AG opinion. In that opinion, and I will simply quote to you ultimately the conclusion. Thus, since the sidewalk is generally considered to be part of the street, a city may expend portions of its municipal aid funds to construct, maintain, and repair sidewalks, and be within the statutory requirement that such funds be spent to construct and maintain its streets. That was done in nineteen eighty-four. So it's, I, I'm not sure what Mr. Chaney was saying when he didn't believe that that was allowed, but their own attorneys provided an AG opinion that says contrary. I, I do think that it makes sense, I mean, I, I think if you all make a decision that you wanna go in this direction, before we ultimately make any final decisions relative to that, that there is a follow-up conversation held with Mr. Chaney, wherein he's approached with this information and make sure that he doesn't have additional information that the staff members of his organization don't have, or, you know, just to get his take on why exactly he, he believed that.
And at the risk of bringing up a terrible conversation that I honestly don't wanna have, by fixing these sidewalks, are we in some way, in your opinion, assuming liability then for these sidewalks, which up to this point in time, we'd like to at least pretend like we didn't have liability, whether or not we actually did or not?
I don't know that, that by completing them, you create for yourself any liability, unless they are, are, you knowingly construct them in a negligent or, or dangerous fashion. I, I will say, I do, I think that one problem that you may have is that if in the future you ever attempt to force a homeowner to make a repair on one of their sidewalks, and you go through the process of repairing other people's sidewalks, you, you could find yourself in a position where people think you're playing favorites, and that can leave, have legal consequences. So, you know, I'm not necessarily suggesting that by doing this, you are foreclosing that possibility altogether. A, a good example of this is the city of Nicholasville. When they did their streetscape program, they replaced everyone's sidewalks. They didn't ask any of the, the property owners to contribute to that project. They didn't. Now, they did it because they also had to destroy those sidewalks, they put them back, but, you know, so there's, there is some precedent there to say that it doesn't always destroy your ability to force a homeowner to, to contribute to that, but it is something you're gonna hear in the future.
Does Nicholasville require homeowners to fix their own sidewalks?
I, I can't state any specific instance, however, I believe that there are ordinances to reflect that the sidewalk is the homeowner's responsibility.
And I can tell you for sure that if you live in Lexington, then you have to fix it, they put a big red X on it, that gives you so many days to fix it. If you don't fix it, they fix it matter to the taxes. I was on the original two thousand and eighteen committee, and we looked at all kinds of policies, and they're all over the place.
Sure. The, the reason I was asking for, about Nicholasville was because it sounds like Nicholasville did what we are talking about doing, and that is paying for some for a significant area, and then whether they.
I think the difference between, if I consider correctly, they tore the sidewalks out.
That is true.
So it's not like they fixed, they tore them out.
Because they're redoing the whole area, they just mount that, because that would be like those replacements, I won't get to water break.
Yeah, right, sure.
So my question, I guess, to the committee is, if you're, are you saying you are gonna disregard the ordinance?
We brought that up, I'm talking to Sharon Church.
I'm just saying, are you gonna bring it forward, and because if we fix Lexington Avenue, then we're saying we're not gonna, we're not gonna ask a homeowner to fix any sidewalk.
That is correct. We proposed for the city to do all of the sidewalks throughout town that need to be repaired. Not this, not necessarily all this year, remember it's a two to five year program.
Anybody's sidewalk is to a.
Not necessarily, we have talked about, you know, let's go ahead and repair everything, and then if we decide as a council, you know, to give it to a homeowner. But there, there are ones, I have pictures right here that are in disrepair, they're just crumbled.
I, I don't wish to.
Yeah, so.
I just, I guess my question, my concern is, if you fix some, and then next year someone else's sidewalk crumbles, and you say, well, you have to fix your own.
We had a conversation that if we got them all up to standard, whatever that standard is, then we could have a conversation, not that we're recommending, but we could have a conversation and say to people, okay, everybody's is up where it needs to be. So now moving forward.
Cheers.
But is there ever gonna be a time when they're all, because if this takes five years, then the ones that were fixed in year one may already be in disrepair.
Our sidewalks will last three years. There's plenty of correcting.
And the next question is, what about all the places that do not have sidewalks? So, I mean, because they're gonna say, well, you fixed all these, so now we don't even have a sidewalk? And do we have an idea on what that would cost to add sidewalks to all?
Millions, it's a lot, there's twenty-seven streets, partial streets with no sidewalk.
Yeah, we, we made a list of the streets that don't have sidewalks, but we didn't have some notion that we were gonna put sidewalks on all of those streets. But there are some places in town that we would love to have a sidewalk, connecting this street to Lowry Lane, it stops right here. That's not an easy fix, but that two thousand and eighteen committee spent hours looking at that, and this committee talked about that too. The, the whole Jessamyn Station getting Woodston Butler up connected to town is another one that we might wanna look at, but I don't think anybody, I, I can't speak for other people, I don't look at every street on there that doesn't have a sidewalk as we're gonna put one. Because Lowry Lane's on there, for example, that would cost millions.
Towel.
Towel.
Cost half a million dollars of money.
And interestingly, to accent what Sharon said, I think, or Jeff said, the worst sidewalks in town are generally in towel. They are in terrible shape, given their newness compared to other places in town, which I think surprises, surprised me.
A, a point, just to note here, the, the two thousand and eighteen ordinance that you referenced, Jim, that doesn't exist, doesn't it?
Right.
Because we never voted on it, so it, you can't even really speak of it as an ordinance.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're planning on bringing it forward again, I mean, it would seem a little odd to fix everybody's sidewalk.
Right.
Well, we're not.
Of course, I just wanted to know whether, where we stand right now is, is, the responsibility is, is still a gray area. Because there never has been an ordinance.
Right.
Before I get too far, thank you so much to the committee, you guys have worked so hard on this, and the, the list of sidewalks that need attention, this is excellent, you guys definitely put a good bit of time into it, so thank you. Was there an area of priority, or was it prioritizing you? It sounds like you have an interest in doing it in phases, and phase one is phase one because.
Phase one, as of tonight, when we talk to Attorney Gullit, is when we would like to do East Main and Lexington, because those are the worst. So, and depending on what is left over, then we can start the other projects.
So, East, East Main's starting downtown, or starting tracks, pretty much?
We'd like to do all of it.
I think we started subway at least.
Yeah.
And it, it is.
Because we, we are currently doing East Main by doing downtown.
Which if Allison interjected, it would just go through your.
So it would be sub, subway to, to the end of it, or to Woodington County, and then Lexington, when you said Lexington, how much is Lexington?
It's really north Lexington.
Yeah, it's really north.
But all that's in that total, from where it starts, where it has a sidewalk, to the airport's where it ends, if it has a sidewalk, both sides of the road.
I really.
Main Street goes down, crosses the tracks, and takes it. Main Street goes down, crosses the tracks, and takes everything to the project that's going on, can't hear a problem. It's a subdrive, Mr. Conley's problem, what we would do.
Sharon literally took a picture of every sidewalk in town that needs work. We could send you that.
And you determined that overall, these two streets need the most work.
Later, we'll see.
It would make sense as far as the amount of traffic there, those two streets.
There's areas.
Yes and no. I mean, part of the priority is the degree to which those sidewalks are used by the public. The other part of the priority was the degree to which they're in disrepair. So we just felt like everything on Lexington and Main Street were used by most of our community. And so regardless of where they were in terms of how bad they were, that made that a number one priority.
I really wish that Ralph was here, because we asked in the last meetings, actually Mayor Rainwater did. He's like, tell us, tell us to use the sidewalks, because I don't, I don't use the sidewalks, I use the road. So, you know, for a person who needs sidewalks, we need to make them accessible.
I think Jim and all of you raise a question. Does the city want to assume responsibility of all sidewalks in town? Because it's always been the assumption that they were the responsibility of the property. Recently, the Seminary replaced their sidewalk that was bad on North Maple. Recently, the Hannes replaced their sidewalk that was bad on South Maple at their own expense. So if you wanted your sidewalk fixed, as you know, in two thousand and eighteen, we made an opportunity available to the community to, that we would take out your bad sidewalk, we would form it, and we would split the cost of concrete to finish your sidewalk, and we had no tapers. Now, several people have said, since then, I would've done it. But at that time, Ned Crossedad said, there was absolutely no tapers. So that's the history behind sidewalks. But I, I do feel that once you make this step, you've made it, you can't go back, and I don't think you can even go back after you repair them and say, now they're the responsibility of the property owner. That may be a way down the road in other councils, ten years from now. But if you assume this, you assume all of it. But by the same token, when the city takes a street, we take on the responsibility to maintain that street forever. You know, not the homeowner. And the sidewalk and the street are built in developments at the same time, and deeded or given to the city to maintain. So that's why we're paying three hundred thousand three years ago to do streets, because we accept that responsibility. We accepted downtown responsibility some thirty years ago, because we had brick sidewalks, no sidewalks, gravel sidewalks, et cetera. And so the city took that on from the post office down, or close to the post office down, South Maple. And that's why we're redoing it again. And we're not using this blade money for what we're doing downtown now. But, anyway, stopping at that.
I guess my other question would be, once a homeowner learns that the city's gonna replace their sidewalk, if they have a repair that need to be done, they'll just have the concrete truck go ahead and knock open the sidewalk.
I think that's a separate ordinance that you do.
And that's it.
You're gonna fix it.
But, I mean, how you gonna tell them, well, we're not gonna fix it? But, I mean, you have to, there's a lot of things that gonna go into it, but I think it is a huge monetary commitment going forward. I do appreciate the work you've committed.
What you have is basically three hundred and nine thousand, is that right? To fix sidewalks, of just sidewalks being prepared, not new sidewalks. So you are talking about thirty million dollars.
Yeah.
In addition to two hundred and fifty downtown now. So, we'll be putting a half a million in sidewalks with this project.
I think, I think it's a solid point made that when it was offered to the homeowners to make, invest in their own sidewalks, it wasn't being done. As far as what people assume, as far as whose responsibility it is, I think most residents assume it's the city's responsibility, because they see, I mean, it is a public easement. And while city may understand that it's a gray area, or maybe public, or maybe homeowner's responsibility, I think that most people see it as the city's responsibility. I, and I'm not convinced that if we repaired sidewalks, people without sidewalks would assume that we then need to add a sidewalk. We are repairing sidewalks that currently exist with the hope to make connections and pathways, pedestrian pathways in other places such as Jessamine Station and Twix Point. But I, I don't think this makes the assumption that we're gonna start adding sidewalks further on. I'm, I'm in the position to, to put as much money as possible towards this phase of sidewalks and to take on the responsibility of repairing sidewalks for our, our residents. And in it, I don't see we're doing, I don't feel like we're doing it for the homeowners, I feel like we're doing it for all Wilmore pedestrians and our.
Since this comes from a committee, does it need a motion to?
Yeah, it wanted a second, if that's your recommendation as a committee. Is that correct? Right, let's do a second.
I'll second.
Okay, now we can discuss.
Rather discuss it before, that's our rule.
Yeah, one point of clarification, I know it's not a part of the current motion, but the whole Jessamine Station issue, I think we all agreed about that, but the north side of Jessamine Station is not in Wilmore.
That's correct.
That's in the county. So that project got stopped for several reasons, but utmost in those reasons was because it wasn't even our property. So we couldn't even force people to let us, we'd have to ask the county to force them to have a sidewalk, because that's where, the current sidewalk is on that side of the street. Just don't want anybody to leave with a misunderstanding about that.
And just let me make sure I understand the process. So we're gonna put ninety-six thousand now, ninety-three thousand now, and place it in Avenue.
Well, it's East Main.
And then in the new year, when the hundred and forty thousand comes, we're gonna do some more of these.
But I thought we were gonna look at.
Streets and.
My sense is this recommendation or this vote is just for the ninety-three thousand and just for this current, to begin, to cover this first phase, not, nothing.
And I really would want the motion to read as I'm hoping it does, not to exceed ninety-three thousand.
Correct.
You'll just do so many blocks.
I've learned enough to know that once you get into these projects, oh, well, there's really three more that weren't on the list, and five more over here, and we might as well fix this while we've got this torn out.
Really? You notice that.
I notice. Well, Jim makes a very good point, because some of these sidewalks, not so many of the ones we're talking about now, but some of them are bad, because it's the sidewalk portion of the driveway. So we're gonna put a nice new sidewalk, while both sides of it now is gonna be the driveway, that's still gonna look terrible. So you're right about driving over it.
What, you're not gonna fix side of the street?
I'm not sure I can.
You wouldn't fix the driveway or anything besides the sidewalk?
Like on your house or my house, the sidewalk is part of our driveway. We're only fixing the sidewalk part.
Not your apron.
Not the little ramp coming up to it, and now obviously on the house.
Because there's lots of fragile aprons around town.
Yes.
I guess that's where we could work with a homeowner.
Yeah, exactly.
If you want to pay for that.
Extra.
While we're here.
Right. Because there aren't several of those.
I've got one of those.
Again, we're talking about, I mean, basically the part of the sidewalk that goes across the driveway, driveway space.
Right, right.
Yeah, my apron, not the driveway, just the strip of sidewalk that goes through them. And like I said, you know, like.
So we would not be repairing that, but we would offer.
I've just mentioned that.
One, one potential.
Which could be directly between them and contractor.
Yeah.
And kind of what we thought after we do East Main and Lexington is, you know, do some culverts, which the majority of them are up in top of subdivision, do some streets, you know, which could be over at Butler, and then some of the streets on, what is it, South Walnut, is that one? Is really bad, like there's, there's no sidewalk. So kind of hit all of the main, so that people are, you know, we, everybody knows that we're working at their, in their neighborhoods, so.
Well, what's, what's referring to the motion? So the motion is for ninety.
Let Sharon, since she made the motion, let Sharon state the motion.
Well, what is the motion?
The motion is to use ninety-three thousand on Main Street and Lexington Avenue to repair the sidewalks with municipal road.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
I don't wanna take responsibility always and forever. I don't, I think that it's been such a sticky issue for decades, because if we don't take responsibility, then the only way to compel someone to do it is by force. And if they don't have the money to do it, then you can put them in a bind by forcing them to do it. That's why no, nothing's ever been done about it. People that want to do it, and, and want to spend the money on it, will do it. So, to me, and because it's never been clear, in order to make it fair, you know, in a sense, I think that the only way would be, again, get everything up to the standard, and then I still, I know that an attorney can make an argument either way, I get that, but at least it's reasonable to understand that once everything's up to standard, you could then make an ordinance, any point, any point along the way, any council can make an ordinance that says, as of today, it's yours. And I understand that could be argued, but to me, it's easier to swallow that than it is to say today, to focus on Walnut, that sidewalk's been rubble for years, oh, you gotta fix that in six months, and if you don't, it's gonna be whatever fine. That's kind of my, my thinking on the committee, I was kind of, you know, dragging along the way. I want the sidewalks to be nice as well, but I, I think a lot like Jim in the sense that it's, it will be a big lift in the future. And especially if you have more subdivisions and more growth and more sidewalk, to say that the city's gonna own this forever, I just, I just can't abide that, so.
Is there wording in this vote that states that we're taking it forever, or is it just a few years?
No, it's just the, it's just the kind of the way the discussion went, to kind of assume that, and I, I'm, I will push back on that a little bit, so.
And I, to the extent that I contributed, definitely being clear, I'm not suggesting that by doing this, you're taking over that responsibility indefinitely. I'm just going, I mean, it doesn't take a lawyer to tell you, when you fix someone's sidewalk and not someone else's, that someone else very well may come to you and complain. And that is an issue for the council to consider.
Okay, other discussion? Question? All in favor, please indicate by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, committee. Counsel, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Sharon, she.
No, we all did it together, we did it together.
Well, I have another item, and Judy Woolips was supposed to do this presentation to recognize our fire department a couple of weeks ago. Josh, you wanna speak to this? Why don't you come with?
So, for the council members and citizens here that don't know, Public Works, Jeff Mobley donated a John Deere Gator to the fire department. He asked, said they were gonna get rid of it, asked if we would be interested in taking the, the John Deere Gator. Of course, the fire department, we, we take everything we can get. So we got it, the guys worked really, really hard the past couple of months on getting it repainted, getting everything on it, equipment, everything that, that is on it now. And I talked to Judy and got the schedule for all of the concerts and all of the public events going on in the city. And so now that we have our, we call it, it's Gator eighty-five is its number, we call it our fast attack vehicle. And so we keep it, it's at the firehouse, and anytime there's an event in the city of Wilmore, the, the Gator goes with two firefighters on it. It does have a small, a small amount of firefighting capabilities and a large amount of EMS capabilities. So, they hadn't had anything, hadn't had to use it, and then the, it was what, you're all's fourth or fifth event?
Fourth.
They were at one of the concerts on the green and had a person in the band, you can speak more to that.
Jackie Waldrop.
They were playing in the band, got hot, overheated, sit down, and almost passed out. And from what I heard, I was not there, but from what I heard, within seconds, those guys were to his side and started working on him and started EMS treatment on him, and were able to call an ambulance, so there was no delay in somebody figuring out to call nine-one-one. As soon as it happened, they already had an ambulance en route to the scene. I know Mayor Rainwater can speak on his condition after the fact and what the hospital said.
Well, I just, Jackie sent me this Saturday. I've gotta go back to the doctor on Wednesday, I feel better, trying to determine what happened. It was determined that he had a mini-stroke at least. Then I love you guys, just glad I wasn't playing it painful on Saturday night. Said I had a choice to come here, and I did. If I hadn't gotten to the hospital quick, I don't know. My heart rate was low, I was dehydrated, my blood pressure was high, and low oxygen. God is good, the two firemen were excellent, by the way. And he thanked you himself. And at some point, he wanted to come and be a part of this, but he wasn't quite ready tonight. And so we'll have another time to, for him to thank you for that.
So Jacob Atwood was one of the firefighters there that night, the other firefighter is out of town right now, and he wasn't able to make it. But he was one of the firefighters on duty that night at the event, and he also works for Jeff in Public Works for the city of Wilmore. So, without those guys being there, I, for sure, could've had a different outcome, I feel like. So that's, that's exactly why, exactly why we have them there, so.
We will have another gathering, and Jackie will be here for that. Thank you on behalf of the city council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, public, this is when you have the opportunity to speak to the council.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
If a lady with high heels.
Can you come speak there? You've spent all this money.
With the microphone, I'm sure we'll have something to say.
Oh, I'm sure you did.
The question is, is if a lady with high heels walks over my sidewalk, gets stuck in a crack that's really been fixed a long time ago, falls and gets hurt, who's liable for the damage, and who has to pay for the cost that that neglect would have caused? You did.
You did.
I did.
Sure.
So, so I, I have to fix my sidewalk?
Yes.
Because that was an issue that I, I missed in the discussion.
Well, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a discussion that we had tonight. But yes, generally speaking, a homeowner is responsible for the improvements thereon. The city does not own the, your, your property or your sidewalk. There may be an easement set out for the sidewalk to exist, but the city does not, I am unaware of the city having any responsibility to do what the city is doing. The city has simply decided that there is a public interest in doing what they're doing.
Now, is there a set standard as to what a repaired sidewalk can be? Now, is there a set standard as to what a repaired sidewalk has to look like? I mean, otherwise you could just fill and paint, book chewing award and say my sidewalk is fixed.
I think you'd have to talk to a concrete man to get that answer. I am not one, I could not tell.
You can look at the, the ordinance that we drew up that we never passed and it dictates exactly what would be a problem. For example, any brick slab or block having a crack of more than five-eighths inches wide. Adjoining brick slabs or block, blocks of portion thereof, who edges differ vertically by more than five-eighths of an inch. It goes on and on. We, in that first committee back in two thousand eighteen, we identified what a problem sidewalk is.
Is that made, is that a public something that?
It was never passed.
It was never passed, so it's just a, an old recommended ordinance. There it is.
See, I come from Germany and, uh, in Germany, if something happens, you pay for it. In fact, you have to have your sidewalk cleaned off in the winter time by seven o'clock in the morning.
There are places where that is the rule.
And, uh, so, so, uh, every homeowner has a homeowner protective insurance.
Thank you. To the question of responsibility, I, I thought that Kentucky state law protected landowners. If pedestrians are crossing or walking a path or something and they got hurt, as long as that private landowner is not charging them to cross their property, my understanding was that it, it's not the landowner's responsibility.
I'm unaware of that. If you've got a citation or a case, I'd have to read it.
I mean, you know, for example, Asbury University with the fall on the Palisades land, um, they, there, there was no sticking power of the lawsuit.
I don't know anything about the fall. I don't even know what the Palisades property is.
Sure.
I was told the same thing that I.
But I've heard, I mean, I, I, like, if, if someone is on a person's land and crossing that land, if they were to get hurt, my understanding is, is not the landowner's responsibility as long as the landowner isn't charging them to be on that property.
I am unaware of that.
Would it really be the responsibility of that private, like, in this situation, if that person fell on the sidewalk and the city has no ordinance that states that it's a responsibility of the landowner, the homeowner to fix their sidewalk, how is it the homeowner's responsibility?
Because it is an improvement on the homeowner's land. For example, if I had a, um, if, uh, I dug a six-foot hole in the middle of the sidewalk and you walked and you was night and you were walking on the sidewalk and you tripped and fell and hurt yourself, is that not my responsibility?
Of course.
Of course it is. This is very similar. It is a sidewalk, it is your obligation to maintain it. If it is inherently dangerous as a result of deterioration, that is your responsibility as a homeowner. Now, if you, I mean, if there's something, I, I see no difference in that than any other improvement that you have on your home. You know, what, what's the difference between rock, walking on a sidewalk and walking in your threshold?
Which might be different than like a dirt path or walking across the grass. It's not an improvement on the property you're referencing, an improvement, but not an improvement that that landowner made, an improvement that the city made.
But you wouldn't let me block off my sidewalks so that nobody walked on it so that I couldn't get to the.
Because there's an easement. Yeah, that, when you purchase land with an easement, you purchase it subject to that, that restriction, which is a restriction of the deed.
Anything else?
Thanks for, uh, being here and it's, uh, please be patient with me since this is my, my first time that I've ever, I had to do something like this for a while. My name's Isaac Watson and, uh, I'm here, uh, to request that, um, the council consider, um, amending Wilmore's, Wilmore's animal ordinance to allow for pig raising, raising pigs. My family lives on a half-acre plot on the outskirts of Wilmore. For the past six months or so, my wife and I have begun to enact our shared and long-held conviction that we need to use our land purposefully. What started as a garden that has since produced a plethora of peppers, collard greens, tomatoes and cucum, cucumbers quickly evolved into raising chicks and duck wings for eggs. This journey has been fruitful for a number of reasons, including it has, basically it's saved us money. Growing our own fruits and vegetables is cheaper than buying them at the grocery store. It has taught our children, uh, important life lessons about where food comes from and the work responsibilities that are required to grow and raise it. Um, one of my favorite parts of the day is going out in the evening with my seven-year-old daughter Ellie to round up our chickens and ducks and, and to their coop. This journey has also given us the opportunity to be generous to and to get, get to know our neighbors better. Our neighborhood is a microcosm of Wilmore's diverse population. It's been a joy to give our surplus crop away and we look forward to doing the same with our eggs that our chickens and ducks will start to produce at the end of this month. Some of our neighbors have also taken an interest in our new agricultural initiatives. This has led them to do things like donate fruit for the chickens and ducks to eat and more importantly, created the opportunity to develop more substantial relationships. Our neighbors have also been generous to us. Our chick, our coop is becoming a community, community gathering place and my daughter again also loves to show our birds off to her friends. Uh, this initiative has been, become life-giving and therapeutic for me. I'm currently working on my PhD, my dissertation as a PhD student at Asbury Seminary. Uh, and agricultural work has become a refreshing alternative too and has actually strengthened my ability to think clearly and write. It's amazing what a little fresh air and hard work can do. From a broader perspective, this work has helped me to discover a more beneficial life balance, which integrates my faith, family, academic pursuits and physical labor. As we have continued to think about how we could further develop what has become our small homesteading operation, my wife and I have recognized that our only other realistic option is raising pigs for meat. In addition to the reasons I listed above, this will also give us the opportunity to consume healthier, healthier meat. We'll know what is going into the meat because we will be responsibly, responsible for feeding the pigs. It is important to note from the start that we all, only want to raise two pigs. We would raise one, however, I've learned that pigs are social animals and to raise one alone would be inhumane. It is also important to clearly explain that I'm not looking to start an industrial pig raising or breeding operation, nor do I view this endeavor as a springboard for raising larger livestock. For example, I know that I do not have enough land to raise a cow responsibly. As I've lobbied the mayor and some city council members, uh, thank you, Mr. Brumfield, Mr. Ryle and Mr. Beatty. I had, uh, sort of private, or prior connections with those three and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for listening to me. I'm, it wasn't an offense. I didn't not insult you for a reason and I don't mean to blindside you if this is a surprise to anybody, uh, um, who have graciously given their time to listen to me, I've learned that they are supportive of the reasons that I've listed for wanting to, to raise pigs. However, I also learned that there might be some significant objection to this possibility based on past issues with livestock in Wilmore. This has caused me to anticipate potential concerns, which I would like to address now. The field of urban agriculture has helped us to recognize that the boundaries between rural and urban are not as hard, hard and fast as we may have previously thought. While there is certainly still a need for large-scale farming operations in rural contexts, community gardens are popping up in cities across the United States. I have two friends, my cousin i- is part of developing community gardens in Columbus and I have a friend who does the same in Atlanta. People have also begun to raise animals in more urban settings such as chickens and ducks for both eggs and meat. The city of Wilmore features several examples of this. As part of this trend, people who live in urban settings have also started to raise pigs. I've discovered that raising pigs in your back, in your backyard has become a new phenomenon. In support of this, an article published on Penn State University's ex, extension website explains that only eight square feet are needed to raise a pig and I'd be happy to provide that source, I footnoted here. Pigs don't need the same amount of space as cows or horses because they're not as active. Along these same lines, cities like Louisville, Kentucky and Nicholasville allow their residents to keep pigs as pets. I think that if I lived on the same amount of property as I do in, in Louisville, I could have seven pigs as a pet. If I lived on less than point two-five acres, I could have three. And I don't think that the ordinance in, in, in Nicholasville is that specific. But if you wanna make a pet, temporary pet ordinance, I, I don't know. Other smaller cities throughout Kentucky have more blanket ordinances that prevent, you know, either prevent or set larger land requirements for raising large livestock, so I wouldn't do those two. However, you know, I, if I've looked at the zoning map properly in Wilmore, there are already larger livestock, there's already horses being raised here. It's just that the loan is, or that, that the land is zoned as agricultural, that's the problem. Another issue that I'd like to address is the issue of odor, bad smell. Pigs have traditionally been perceived as being dirtier and smellier animals compared to cows or horses since they like to do things like roll around in the mud. However, in actuality, uh, pigs don't, do not inherently produce more off-putting odor compared to other animals. According to Rob, an expert in pig raising from a farm, Dowdell Family Farms in Mississippi, um, he's the one who, I, I read something from him and I've also footnoted it here. On top of this, understanding odor in my neighborhood in, in Wilmore is not a significant issue. My property borders the county line and a cow pasture. The sm, the smell of cow manure often dominates, that is, when it does not have to compete with the more powerful and just, uh, distasteful smell of the wastewater treatment plant. If there is an issue with pig odor, the real issue, the real issue is the people who are responsible for taking care of them. This is an entire, entirely different and, and significant problem also, uh, as well. In order to produce healthy, healthy pork, pigs need to be raised in healthy conditions. It is not respectful to them or your neighbors to disregard dealing with manure, which I, I mean, if, if, if the ordinance is changed, look forward to using to fertilize my garden and not provide, uh, not providing a dry shelter for them or not regularly changing bedding such as hay or chips or pine shavings, which also prevent smell. I've learned this by doing my own research and consulting local farmers. I also prioritize this with my, in my chicken coop. So, more often than not, I, I regularly change pine shavings uh, in the coop and in the room and put diatomaceous earth down below it. It prevents smell and it, uh, is good for keeping away mites and all that kinda thing. Anyway, uh, I've, I've learned from my own research and I'm, have been grateful for, uh, for, for the mentorship of friends who are also farmers in, in the area. In conclusion, um, by no means am I suggesting that everyone who lives in Wilmore should have the option of raising pigs. Houses within, Wilmore exist within varying proximities of each other. For, I mean, for example, in neighborhoods, in a lot of our neighborhoods, houses exist very closely together. But however, in my neighborhood, in, in neighborhoods like mine, there is a much greater distance between houses, which is ideal for raising all sorts of animals that are big enough. It's also important to note that I have consulted most of my neighbors about the possibility of using, of us raising pigs and they've all been supportive. Actually, I don't think she would mind me sharing this, but Sheila Klingshern said, uh, that she'd prefer us raise pigs over the rooster that her neighbor across the street has who's, who crows at like two in the morning. It's based on this understanding that I recommend that people who live on lots that are as big as mine or larger be allowed to do this for the sake of neighbors and the humane raising of pigs. People interested in raising pigs in Wilmore should be also required to, you know, maintain proper fencing, meaning metal wire fencing and electric fencing and to maintain the healthy pig pen and, and the practices that I've already mentioned. This will also ensure public safety by preventing pigs from getting loose and ensuring that they are protected from potential threats such as coyotes. Because of the, the cow pasture in my backyard, my wife walked outside with the dogs one night and there were coyotes in our backyard and she turned right around and ran back, right back inside. There's also cow jumps over, or cows jump over my fence all the time. But that guy, and I've helped that guy wrangle, leave them back over and he's still never given you one steak. Again, it's been, uh, thank you for hearing me out on this. It's been an education just to experience, uh, what go, my first city council meeting. And thank you for even the opportu, or thank you for even being willing to consider this. And the last thing I'll say is I'm happy to share bacon with you. If I mention bacon enough, maybe it'll change, it'll make you, make you hungry, uh, so that's.
Isaac, thank you for your presentation. Um, we will, this is not an intended item, so it will, uh, it will not go forward tonight.
Yeah, no, no.
Uh, but is there anyone else that has, uh, public comments?
Where do you live, sir?
What?
What street do you live on?
Uh, I use, uh, High Street.
Towards south or north?
Towards Adventure Service, uh, you go up Wood Street and it's.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other arms of business?